I want to welcome everyone, and sorry about the issue getting into the building. But let me note it's 7:06 PM. It's Tuesday, December 19. This board had an executive session that concluded at, I think it was 6:57. And we are now going to enter into our public meeting. As we always do at the outset of these meetings, I want to invite everyone in the room to please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have a few scheduled items at the outset. So the first item we have is J.S. Krishna Corporation Doing Business as Hobart's Country Store. So I'm going to ask counsel and his clients to come forward. This involves a change of doing business as, change of location, and a pledge of license amendment. Let me read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the select board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, on Tuesday, December 19, 2023, at 7:00 PM, on the application of J.S. Krishna Corporation DBA Hobart's Country Store for a change of DBA to Hobart's Liquor and a change of location and pledge of license amendment to operate this license on said new premises located at 2512 Main Street, Tuxbury, Massachusetts. Said premises described as retail store consisting of 2,160 square feet of retail space on first floor with one main entrance, two side exits, and basement storage of 600 square feet. The hearing will be held in the select board's meeting room, Main Hall, at 1,009 Main Street, Tuxbury, Mass. We always welcome input from the public, and we recommend that comments be submitted in writing to the board on or before noon time on Thursday, December 14. My colleagues should have a copy of the tombstone notice that was filed. They should have a copy of the checklist from the various departments, and also in a butters list. And I will now just explain to -- whoops, let me just get the parties that are present. So counselor, welcome.
Sure. Attorney John Meridian, Democats Law Office is with me is Sanjay Patel, the owner of J.S. Krishna Corporation.
All right, welcome, and thank you. So at the outset, I just want to put on the record, I'm not sure the counselor that you're aware of this or not, but we're certainly prepared to move forward with the hearing and your request. But as it relates to the component of a pledge of the license, the town's had a longstanding policy, as I understand it, and sitting here at this table for quite some time, I know we've had this discussion with other parties. But the policy that Tuxbury's had for many, many years is that we don't allow for pledges. So I think the opportunity should be afforded to you to offer all of the elements of what you're asking for tonight, but that might potentially change some of the components of what you're looking for.
Okay.
Might require some revisions to paperwork.
Okay.
So I want to make that known to you at the outset, and if you want to respond to that, you certainly can feel free, but...
Sure, I'll give my presentation, and we can discuss the pledge.
Yeah, and we'll try to make it as easy as we can moving forward, okay? So if you can just summarize for my colleagues and I what specifically is happening here and what you're trying to accomplish, I think we know most of it from the submission.
Sure, the simple change up front is a request of the DBA change to Hobart's Liquors from Hobart's Country Store, the change in the DBA. The main ask here is a change of the location from 2154 Main Street to 2512 Main Street. They've built a new building to operate the liquor store. It's near completion. They've worked with the building department to finalize that. We need approval of change of the location of the license to that new space. What they're going to do is tear down the old building and that become a parking lot area as well as a snow storage area with the building department. The new building, it's a brand-new building, they built the past year or so. The only typo I have here, it should be attic storage, not basement storage, or 600 square feet, but otherwise, the floor plan's been submitted. They're just moving the store right next door on that.
Yeah, and it looks good.
And then lastly, on the pledge of the license, I did not know the town had a policy against that, so I can withdraw that request, and I'll talk to the bank, but I can fix that.
Okay, excellent. All right. So I've driven by there, I go by there frequently on my commute, and it looks like a very nice, well-done building, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And how far are you to completion?
We are almost there, probably another two, three weeks.
Excellent, okay. So just after the turn of the year. All right, do my colleagues have questions of the applicant on these items?
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, is on page 10, in regards to these, it says it ends 10/31/23.
That's a typo, it should be 20/33. Yeah, I'll fix that, too.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, and I was remiss, I should have noted for those watching here in the room or at home, that Mr. Kratman's joining us remotely, so any votes we take will be required by open meeting law to be done by roll call vote. I just want to make that known, so people understand what's going on. Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay, so if not, what I would ask for is a motion to change the DBA and a motion to authorize the change of location, and then we'll deal with the pledge separately if that's acceptable to my colleagues.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland, to approve the first two requests, all those, and I can't do it that way. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I'll vote in the affirmative as well. So that's a five to zero vote approving the DBA change and the location change. And I guess at the request to counsel, what I would ask for is a motion to allow for the withdrawal of the request to pledge the license.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman, for the motion, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I'll vote in the affirmative as well. So that's five to zero to authorize the withdrawal of the pledge request. I think the paperwork will probably have to be revised slightly.
Yeah, I can email revisions to Paul tomorrow morning.
You can work on that, and then the board will execute the license with those two changes.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. Good luck with your new facility.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, we have a common victual license application from Aroma Joe's. Is anybody in the room here from Aroma Joe's? Come on forward, sir. If you wouldn't mind, just give us your name and address or affiliation.
My name is Kevin Ahern, I'm one of the owners of Aroma Joe's. I reside at Four Florence Ave in Salisbury, Massachusetts.
Thank you, sir, you're welcome. So I think this is pretty straightforward, just, you've been in business for some time.
We are, yeah, I think this is an oversight. We came in front of the planning board, did all the board of health, and didn't realize this was missing until Paula brought it to our attention recently.
Time for renewals.
Taking care of it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Do my colleagues have any questions about this particular application?
No.
Nope? All right. Is there a motion to approve the new common victual license?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. Mr. Kratman, can I ask you to vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well. So that's five to zero, and I believe there'll be a license for the current year, and then there's a renewal for January 1st, if I recall correctly.
We get that, all right, yeah.
So, yeah, so we'll get those in process.
Great.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we at 7:15? We are. Okay, the next item we have is T&amp;O Corporation Doing Business as Brothers Sports Bar and So this is not a public hearing, but it is a pledge of license request, if I have my facts right. So let me first ask you to introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Peter Tsunakis, president of T&amp;O Corp, Doing Business as Brothers Sports Bar and Grill.
Okay, and you probably were in the room the last 10 minutes, right?
I got the answer to my question.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that we can really, there's no other ask other than the pledge, right?
No, so we'll take it up with the bank from, yeah.
Yeah, that would be our recommendation. It's a longstanding policy that the town has had.
Understood.
And I'm sure we can work through the logistics and the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let me ask if you wish to withdraw that request, and we'll take action on it.
Yes.
All right. So can I have a motion to allow the withdrawal of the pledge request?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson votes aye, so that's five to zero authorizing the withdrawal of the pledge request, and I'm sure we'll be talking again very soon.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Sorry for the inconvenience, have a great night. All right, our next item is scheduled for 7:20, so I need to wait two minutes before we start that. So let me ask, Mr. Montori, can we cover town council invoices?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two town council invoices, one from November 1st through November 15th in the amount of $2,295, and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland, to approve the invoice from November 1st through November 15 for town council. I can't do voice vote, I'm sorry. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
I will vote in the affirmative, that's unanimous on that one. And I think, do you have another one?
Second one, in the amount of $2,380 for November 16th through November 30th, and I would recommend approval.
Is there a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey, for the motion, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so that's five to zero to approve that invoice as well. Mr. Holland, you want to cover our minutes from September 28?
Yes, I have the minutes, as if there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from September 28, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Holland, there's scrivener's error. The meeting was held that night, I believe.
So your first line is PM?
Yeah, where it says PM.
All right.
Yep, and then when Mr. Kratman arrived, also should be PM.
Okay. So with those two scrivener corrections, Mr. Holland, you're offering a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Mackey. I can't do that. Mr. Holland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Well, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman? We couldn't hear you on that, Mr. Kratman, I think you're on mute. Oh, how did you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And the chair votes aye as well on that. So that's a unanimous five to zero on the September 28 minutes. Mr. Holland, you want to speak to the October 24 minutes?
I'd like to approve the, make a motion to approve October 24th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so those minutes are now approved. All right, so it's 7:22, we'll go back to our original agenda. Is anyone here from Pere Grill? All right, come on forward, sir. All right, so can you introduce yourself for records?
Yeah, I'm the owner of Pere Grill, my name is Emre Arslan.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
So you are looking for a common victual license as well. Is this the first time you've been here?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we're finding folks who had missed out on the opportunity a year or so ago, right?
Right.
All right, okay, do my colleagues have questions for Mr. Arslan?
I have none.
No? Okay, let me ask if there's a motion to approve the common victual license.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey and Mr. Kratman for the second. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so I think we've cleaned that up, and as I mentioned to the prior person, on his license, I believe there's a license for the current year through the end of December, and there'll be a second one, so you must have already addressed that with the town manager's office, right?
Yep, thank you so much.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Okay, Mr. Montori, do you have any items you want to speak to?
Not as far as the manager's report goes, but there are a couple under the new business section that we'll take up.
Okay, all right, let's, let me go to the licenses on item 11 through 15, those are pretty straightforward. If you can help me with that, folks, right with you here, I just got to find them. All right. All right, so if I could ask, we have 12 liquor licenses that have been presented since we last met. I'm not going to read all the names, I believe they were in the published packet. I would ask my colleagues to offer a motion to approve the 12 that have been processed for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I can't do that, again, I'm going to have a problem tonight. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, I apologize for that, it's just a habit. All right, we have common victual licenses that also have been processed since we last were in this room, there were 29 this evening. Again, I won't read all the names, but I will ask for a motion to approve all of these processed licenses.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote on those?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, so that's a unanimous approval. We have seven amusement licenses that require approval that have been processed since we last met. Any questions, and if not, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey for the motion, Ms. Wellman for the second. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
Chair votes aye on that as well, that's unanimous. We have 10 entertainment licenses. Are there any questions? And if not, may I ask for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Kratman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson votes in the affirmative, that's five to zero, and the last set of licenses, we have four class licenses or auto sales licenses, again, processed since we last were here. May I have a motion on those?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey for the motion, and Mr. Kratman for the second. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative, so that's five to zero on those. Okay, let's go back up to 7:25. Pull Up LLC, is there anybody here from that organization? So welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Would you do us a favor, just introduce yourself?
Yep, my name is Robin Brown, I'm the owner of the Pull Up LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And is this the same situation? Is this a renewal, or is this the first time?
This is the first time.
First time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. All right, so my colleagues have a floor plan. Any questions that they have for Mr. Brown?
I have none.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to assume no other questions.
No, I have.
I'm sorry, I apologize, Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live in your neighborhood, so I drive by your business all the time. I'm looking forward to your opening, do you know when you might be opening?
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, the whole community is interested.
Yeah.
And excited to see you open, and wishes for your success.
Thank you so much.
So, we're very excited. I know you did some extensive renovations in the building, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So, and you've been, you've owned it for a little while now.
So I don't own it.
But leasing it.
But I'm leasing it, but the goal is to own it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for this and bringing it all to us, your drawings are great, your application is complete, and we look forward to your success.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mackey?
Just one comment, Ms. Wellman already got the question I was going to ask about when you guys are opening. Just want to confirm, you guys are going to have fried platanos, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that means I don't have to go to Lawrence anymore, so I'm excited to have them down the street, thank you.
All right, if there are no other dietary questions, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Kratman, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
All right, and I will be another aye vote, so congratulations, welcome to town.
Thank you.
All right.
All the best. Thank you so much.
Let us know when you have your opening through the manager's office, thank you.
All right, that brings us to the residence portion of the meeting. Are there any residents in the room who came here tonight to address the board on any particular item? No? Yeah, I see hands going up? Okay, so the way we have to do this, we have one microphone right over there, I ask you to just please go one person at a time, and I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself, and I'll give you a few minutes to offer whatever comments or questions you have. Don't be bashful.
Hi there, my name is Michelle Stella, I live over at Andover States, which is Polly's place.
Thank you.
And I have my notes, because that's how I...
That's fine.
Make sure I don't babble. I'm here to speak on behalf of the board at Andover States, who are in opposition of the proposed cannabis dispensary at 1625 Andover Street. Last night, at the town hall planning board meeting, at which I attended, it was confirmed that the expected traffic in and out of the cannabis shop would be as high as 900-plus trips. That's each day. Had the approved high-end Italian restaurant gone in, the anticipated trips each day were projected at 300-plus, again, this information came from last night's meeting. That is three times the traffic, and it's a different type of traffic and a different clientele. Our townhomes are directly across the street. Are you guys all getting feedback? Sorry, that's the worst. See if I stand back a little. Our townhomes are directly across the street from this proposed cannabis shop, perhaps 20 steps across the street. Our beautiful homes were built only 12 years ago, and when most of us bought, I'm going to step away.
Unfortunately, you can't, no. Folks at home won't hear you.
Okay. Perhaps 20 steps across the street, that's how close this proposed shop is. Our beautiful homes were built only 12 years ago, and when most of us bought our place, there wasn't a single business across the street from us. I've only been there a little, over seven years, and the bank, preschool, and coffee place have all gone up since then. And yes, traffic is much worse than it was prior to any businesses being constructed. All the split lanes with arrows have created a more dangerous road for us. However, at least those businesses attract Tuxbury residents for typical services that do not impede on our daily level of comfort and safety. We cannot say the same for a cannabis dispensary. We are greatly concerned about the value of our homes dropping with a weed dispensary directly across the street from us. I know that I would not have bought my home if that business was located across the street back then. We are greatly distressed at the thought of that much traffic and the percentage of undesirables that will visit that business daily. I specifically want to talk about our turnaround drive, which is a private way. With 900 visits per day, which, again, you'll hear from the board that was here last night, if only 5% of them, 5% of them say, pass by accidentally, they will, the way the drives will be lined up, they will use us as a turnaround. That would be 45 cars a day coming through our private way to turn around. We're not comfortable, obviously, with that. We are still a residential area that happens to run alongside a section of commercially-zoned land, okay? The dispensary business belongs in a strictly commercially-zoned area, not smack dab across the street from beautiful townhomes, where family lives with some children. And it certainly does not belong right next to a preschool that houses 120 children currently. Almost done. We already have our share of concerns related to crime further down 133 at the gas stations and hotels. Now, to be clear, nobody here is saying, at least that I know of, that all people who go to the dispensary are unsavory characters, but we are saying that there is a percentage that raises concern. All you have to do is Google robberies at dispensaries in Massachusetts, and you can come up with a list of problems. Down in Draken at Bries Dispensary, most of these places are cash-only places. What do you anticipate happens to cash-only places exactly? Again, you can do your research and see the robberies that occur. Homeless also down the way, and I can only speak from people who have shared this with me, that also outside some of these dispensaries, specifically the one down in Draken, there's that also outside some of these dispensaries, specifically the one down in Draken, there's problems with homelessness. People hanging around asking for money, that type of thing. Now, I understand that the interested party has said that they would have redundant alarms installed. If they are such a safe business, then I have to ask why the need for redundant alarms? Also, to my understanding, these types of shops have typically a guardsman at the door. If it's such a safe business to stick in a residential area, then why is a guardsman necessary? Those measures may help the business, but I don't see how they help the residents across the street. And finally, we're not opposed to the idea of this type of shop being in Tuxbury. We understand that it could bring in significant tax revenue for the city, but it doesn't belong at 1625 Andover Street. It doesn't. It's a stone's throw away from a preschool, steps away from newly-built homes, and we count on this board to protect us from this venture, and we ask that you vote nay on this location. Thank you for this.
Okay, alright, so thank you for your comments. Let me just step back and make this statement if others in the room here for the same topic. I know there was a public hearing or meeting last night with the planning board, I know you referenced that. This board, in a few moments, is gonna have a discussion with the town manager about scheduling a public hearing for a different license request, for a different location. This particular applicant, to my knowledge, has not yet filed an application with this board to have a public hearing, but before any license is granted, that party would be required to come before this board. So, your comments, obviously, we appreciate, but you're gonna need to probably come back and either repeat them, or voice them in a different way at a given point in time, yet to be determined, if in fact, the applicant does file for a public hearing here. In general, I will note that the town, through town meeting, approved the concept of retail marijuana sales. And the way that the state law is structured is the Commonwealth has a formula. It's based on the percentage of our liquor licenses, and when you do all the math, that allows for the town of Tuxbury to have up to three retail marijuana licenses. We have already, at this level, awarded two of the three. There is one license left, and that remains to be determined where it would go and who would get it. So, there's not gonna be any decision rendered this evening, we can't take any action, there's nothing before us to warrant any action, particularly with reference to the location you're citing. They, they did file before the planning board, which is part of the process, but nothing has been formally filed before the select board. And at this point, as I sit here tonight, I have no way of knowing when and if that will happen.
Okay, but that would, that information would go out to the public?
It would be a publicly posted notice, and if I recall correctly, the law would require that abutters get notified, so you're in a abut, I believe. So, you would get notified, just as you probably were notified of the planning board meeting, and if there was a community meeting a few weeks back, you probably were notified of that as well. So, rest assured that you'll get notified of the public hearing in this room with this board at some point down the road, but it's, it's not on the horizon just yet.
Okay, I think maybe, perhaps, I don't know if others in the room that were there last night, we were sort of directed to come, not specifically tonight.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, you, you will.
I wasn't sure, so.
Yep, and I applaud you for being here, and your neighbors, if they are your neighbors, for being here. I just wanna be clear, there's nothing we can do tonight, and more importantly, when we do have a public hearing, if you're not here for that, then we can't take in your comments, so you'll want to be here for that, okay? So, part of the reason I explain that is I'm hopeful if others are here for this topic, you're welcome to get up and tell us what you think now, but if I were in your shoes, I would save my bullets and come back another night when it has the relevance to the topic at hand. So, I hope that's helpful, okay? Again, we're happy to hear people, but I don't, I want you to understand, we can't do anything at all tonight. Go to the microphone if you want.
My name is Drew Ruth Jottis, 55 Deering Drive, excuse me, but I know you posted at town hall, you know, the agenda and everything.
Yeah.
But the only way we heard about it was kind of, I happened to be looking at Carnation, Tuxbury Carnation online newspaper, and heard about the planning board and everything. Is there a more direct way that we can be notified, or where should we be looking for future meetings?
So, let me ask Mr. Montori if he can define that a little more for us.
So, we'll notify abutters within, you can see the 200 feet or 300 feet of the property, when there's a public hearing for the board of selectmen. Were you notified for the planning board last night?
No, I just, I just happened to see, and I passed.
Yeah, you might have been outside the area for the abutters, but anybody that wasn't notified for the planning board hearing, if they leave me, I'll leave paper for your name and address, we'll make sure you get a notice.
Okay.
And I'll also add that this meeting, this board's meetings are all posted ahead of time, as is required, and the agenda is posted, and you'll see very specifically a public hearing for XYZ Company proposing a license at that address, whatever it was. So, you can find that out, the, the meetings are posted generally a few days before.
Online, right?
Online.
Yep.
That's correct, yep, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that's helpful. Alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
To your point, if you, if folks subscribe to the updates, they'll get an automatic notification for any board they would like, so you don't even have to look, it'll just come to your email box.
Thanks for that help as well.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Anybody else? Sir, come on over to the microphone if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Vid Mittal, I am the tenant at the daycare. I lease the building to run the daycare operations. It came to my surprise that yesterday they conducted a meeting like that for discussing the aesthetics of the building. Just now I realized that it is not the case, like, you know, it's still in the primitive phase, but we were all shocked, thinking that we were not notified. Even for yesterday's meeting, we were not notified, even though we are maybe 100 feet away.
Yeah.
So, we would like to be notified, because ours is a childcare business, preschool, siblings coming, parents coming, dropping off, traffic, you know, you know all those things. So, we just want to make sure you consider all those things and properly notify us as abutters before you make any decision.
Absolutely, and, and just to be clear, the notification is an obligation of the applicant.
Okay.
That's by law, they have to do that, okay? My guess is, do you own the building?
I do not, my landlord is the s-
The owner probably got the notice, and that's-
The problem here is, it is the same landlord who is trying to screw us.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, he is hiding things, we happen to know, based on the newspaper listing somewhere, and my staff brought it up, then I questioned my landlord, because, I, I know, it's irrelevant for this meeting, but I questioned already my landlord, he had signed a lease with us, saying that it won't affect the daycare business. I asked him, why is he doing it, but he's not responding to me, that's the reason I had to come here.
Understood. So, Mr. Montori's gonna put a piece of paper out somewhere in the back of the room here. Before you leave, put your contact information on it, anyone else can, and the town manager's office will send an email or communicate with you when this occurs. We have no way of knowing, I wanna stress that, it's not gonna happen next week, it's not, we have nothing on the calendar.
Right.
So.
And to be, this landlord has done the same thing in the past, when he got the license for Aroma Joe's. And again, he got the license, he has the access right now through our parking lot, and again, they're all irrelevant here, but I'm just trying to say that.
Yeah.
Things get hidden.
Understood.
We just want to be notified.
Yep, and I wanna assure you and your fellow neighbors, whether they be residents or businesses, this board takes its responsibilities very seriously. In the last year, we've gone through a very extensive process on this particular topic, when we had to give out licenses, we had eight applicants for licenses, and it was a very detailed process. So, it will take some scrutiny, and the most important thing is it's a public hearing at that time, and any of you who are interested in that subject matter have every right to come here and tell us what you think, and we will more than gladly take your opinion.
Thank you.
Alright, so hopefully we'll see you again.
Yep.
Okay, alright. Anybody else? On this topic or any other topic? Yep, alright. Usually, no one's here.
Last one, I promise. So, my name's Iran Lopez, I know as you guys mentioned, I'm here to talk about 1625 Andover Street. And although I know you mentioned that later on there will be another public hearing.
Right.
I've always been someone who's a believer of, if you speak to someone, it can get down the line, I'm like, eventually somewhere, or it can be brought up again, so I'm like, if you don't mind, I do wanna speak a little bit, I'm like, on just my thoughts and concerns of the area.
So, let me, before you do that.
Yeah.
You're more than welcome, but just understand, we, there's nothing we can do tonight about that, right? And I'm gonna tell you, I'm getting old, I won't remember a thing you say when we get to the public hearing, so you, you need to either come back and tell us, or you can replay it again, I just want you to understand that, okay?
And I definitely can, because it's something that, once I address, I'm like, at least my neighbors will hear my thoughts as well, I'm like, and they know, I'm like, what my feelings, I'm like, as a center director will be. So, I'm the one who runs the whole center overall.
Yeah.
And my job there is to entitle and make sure that my families and staff members and children are comfortable and safe where they go to school. Part of that is making sure that I'm aware of everything that is happening, from the smallest room in my center to the parking lot and down my street. When I found out first about the town meeting that was held about the potential of the cannabis dispensary being the neighbor of a preschool, I was appalled. As an educator and a leader of my school, and a parent of two children who currently attend the school, I was immediately concerned for many reasons. My concerns started immediately from the outside of the building. Driving up the street, the view of the learning center and the cannabis shop would be an immediate alarm to all who have children, especially when it's in direct eyesight across to our lot. It was brought up last night that the dispensary would not be seen through our parking lot, but a two-story dispensary will be seen, as I can see the lot, as, when I'm sitting down just from my desk. There are multiple bus stops, including two bus stops, that children get on and off the bus directly in front of the preschool and across the street. This causes traffic all on its own. I have personally driven past a dispensary, and you can smell the odors that come from such establishments, which are not orders that children should be smelling from across our outdoor playgrounds at all. In the summer, many of our families enjoy our premises, as well as sitting outside our preschool with their children, and now they would not feel comfortable enough to do so, especially with the constant business traffic flow coming in and out of the dispensary. Our emergency egress leads directly to where the vehicles will be exiting out of the cannabis shop, which again, brings even more heavy traffic. If the cannabis employees or customers walk through our premises to get to Aroma Joe's, how sure are we that they won't be dropping something a child can ingest and end up in a hospital with? We have numerous people who have walked by on a daily, just to get to Aroma Joe's right through our property. So much, that a walkway was actually built connecting both Aroma Joe's and the learning experience, just to get to Aroma Joe's. Concerns of customers leaving under the influence and hurting children and families walking down the now shared road is also a concern. Being that low-five concern was that the cannabis shop's clients were driving out onto their end, now we're gonna have to share a road directly with the cannabis shop. Our center holds up to 120 children and 94 families who come in and out of it daily to drop their children off. The startup of this business, I'm afraid, that could be the ending of ours. So, my questions for thought, I'm like, just for the future, I'm like, and for cannabis owners, would be, how would you guarantee no smoking for customers on all properties? Will there be security guards on premises to make sure no one crosses over, no one's smoking on the premises, and making sure no crimes are being committed? How will we keep traffic from overflowing and backing up when it's already backed up to the day? And lastly, when families and businesses come through our city of Tuxbury, even if it's just for a quick drive off, on and off the highway, how will we look at the city of Tuxbury with a preschool being the neighbor of a cannabis shop? Or a child standing next to a dispensary waiting for a school bus? I'm not saying a dispensary is a bad idea, I'm just saying ethically, there could be a better place than that of already highly-traffic street, a neighboring preschool, or even that of a child just standing right by a bus stop. Other than that, it's just kinda food for thought, at least, I'm like, in that way they know how I feel. But thank you.
I appreciate you sharing with us, I'm gonna do my best to remember all that.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, anybody else? Alright, so just let me, again, remind you, if you're interested in that topic, there will be a public hearing if and only if the applicant files for one. If he chooses not to, then this board has no action to take, right? If they file for one of the remaining, or the remaining license, then there will be a public hearing, it will be publicly posted, you all understand how to get access to that. And when that hearing takes place, we will welcome you all back to hear what you have to say, okay? Alright, alright, we're gonna move on. That brings us to Trahan Elementary School, oh, Mr. Montori, okay, yeah. If you wanna sign on that paper on the podium, you can do that. Alright, Mr. Montori, you wanna explain the request for proposal that you have drafted and put forward?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I sent the board, and I believe it was in the packet, the draft request for proposals for the, leasing the Trahan Elementary School. It's a RFP we've used in the past, made some changes specific to the Trahan. I've received some comments from each of you that will be easy enough to incorporate with no issues. And, I don't know if there are any other thoughts tonight, other than what was sent to me, and we can move along with this process to see if there is any interest in an entity leasing the school. And if there are, and we receive proposals, then set meetings up for the board and those groups to come in and talk. But just wanted to get the process going.
Yep, and Mr. Montori, just for the public's benefit, we don't have a preconceived use for this school, right? You're, this is a very broad-based request that.
Yep.
Offers the opportunity for a creative party to say, this is what we envisioned, and would it match up with what the town is thinking?
Yeah, what we tried to do, you know, in putting the request for proposals together, is keep it as broad as possible to accept proposals from various sources, for various uses, not tying us to one particular use. And we also try to ensure in the request for proposals, to inform any potential groups that may propose on leasing the school, that part of it needs, needs, part of the land will be copped out to maintain for open space, such as the playground area for neighborhood use, and that the rest of the, and we, we distinguish which area will be used to be leased. So, we did keep it broad, you know, the RFP process is something we need to do to follow the procurement laws in Massachusetts. We're out, we are, we did receive approval from town meeting to lease the property, to lease it for a specific number of years. And, you know, we don't know what type of interests is out there, but we won't know until we advertise it. But we tried to incorporate everything we've heard, guarding, maintaining open space, maintaining the playground, having a use that fits with the neighborhood, so I think the RFP is broad enough that'll give us a range of options. And we're not looking to sell the property, we're looking to lease it as the board has wanted to.
Understood, okay. Alright, do my colleagues have any questions on this item?
I have none.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman, you do or don't?
I do, just a couple of small comments. Thank you for sending this forward, I know the community is interested in seeing what we can do here, and the RFP was, was great, I sent you my comments already, and you think those will be fine?
Yep, those will be fine, yep.
And just for the public, I had asked for particularly some more background information added to the background section, just on the work that the community's already done.
Yep.
And, so that, that any applicant would know, kind of, where the community, the information that's been disseminated already, and the work that's been done. Do you have any particular folks that you intend to send the RFP to, to see if they will apply?
The only, the only group that has shown particular interest was the Boston Hockey Academy. They're still interested, they emailed me actually today, I'll send that to them. Any nonprofit groups that have walked through it, whether it was CTI or any others, we'll send it to, just because they took the time to go through it. But, other than that, no, we really, we really don't have particular group or, or interest in the facility, so we'll send it out, hopefully we get something back.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Do you need a vote to authorize, or what do you?
Yeah, I would say, again, the changes that have been requested really weren't anything major, so if you're okay with, with me adding changes that board has submitted, then I'll do that, and get it advertised, and try to get some, and get proposals in, you know, by the end of January, hopefully.
Okay, alright, so if there are no other comments or questions, let me ask if there is a motion to authorize the publication of the request for proposal with the aforementioned edits and changes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Mr. Krabman, how do you vote, sir? Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well. So, it'll be interesting to see how this develops, and I know for many years, people have asked us to use our properties wisely, and this is a good example of former school. Perhaps it can be used in a way that benefits our community. Alright, our next agenda item is a continued discussion around marijuana cultivation facility located at 686 Clock Road. Gentlemen, welcome back, councillor. So, do me a favor, our recording secretary is magically not in the room, so if you could at least tell us who's in front of me, I would appreciate it.
Certainly, Phil Silverman of Vicente LLP. We have Jeff Derby and Mike Secconi, who are the principals of the company.
Thank you, and welcome. Thank you, and welcome back. We, we met with you not too long ago, and we tabled this matter to have the opportunity for our town council to review the draft of the host community agreement, and I believe he has completed that review, Mr. Montori, do we have any comments that we need to address?
So we sent the host community agreement to town council, and we reviewed it internally, and there are no changes or issues with the document.
Okay, so we have the green light to approve it if we're
As comfortable.
willing to do that. All right, are there any other discussion items that my colleagues wish to ask about the agreement itself? All right, if not, I will ask if there's a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Krabman, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so that's five to zero to approve the agreement, we'll get that executed, congratulations, and
Thank you.
good luck with that enterprise.
Thank you very much.
Right.
They do have one other issue, if you just want to stick.
Oh, Mr. Montori?
The next is, the applicant has requested that their host community outreach meeting be held virtually.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
And it's allowed with the approval of the board.
Okay, so, yep, I, thank you, I didn't connect those two things together. So we have a letter dated December 11 from Attorney Silverman on behalf of his client, and as you can see from the correspondence, as Mr. Montori just referenced, there is a requirement for a community outreach, outreach meeting. They are requesting that it be allowed or authorized by this board to be conducted virtually via Zoom, and I guess we'll have to take action on that. Let me just ask councillor, why do you think that's the way to go?
Well, so for a while, the reason for doing these was because of COVID, and sort of the CCC switched us over to this sort of way of doing it. I'll be honest, what we found is that more people attend when it's virtual, you know, I don't know if that's counterintuitive or not, but it tends to be the case. It's, you know, a bit more of a hassle to actually show up somewhere than it is to hop on your computer. Obviously, some people may prefer it the other way, but we found them better attended, so.
Okay, all right, yep, it's the new world order, virtual meetings. All right, do my colleagues have questions about that?
I just have one, how do you plan on advertising the virtual meeting?
So they, there's a notice that goes out, and it provides the Zoom address, provides the information who we are, gives us contact information if people want to ask some questions beforehand, or want a copy of the presentation, but we send, those notices go out to everybody, and they actually go to the town offices as well, and the various officers here. So they're, they're both sent out, you know, by a regular mail.
So you send out to the entire public?
No, 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 the butters, 300 feet.
Oh, the butters, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any advertisement in newspaper about the virtual meeting?
There actually is, we have to advertise it two times, two weeks prior to the actual meeting in a local newspaper.
Okay, because it's not just the butters that might be concerned, it might be
Certainly, certainly.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman?
Is there, do you have an appetite for doing a hybrid meeting?
If the board preferred it, we would do it.
Okay. I have no, I have no objection to remote participation, but I do think that sometimes, as you can see tonight, folks do like to show up. I don't know how they will feel about your particular application.
I understand.
You know, so, okay, thank you.
All right, let me ask if there's a motion to authorize the virtual outreach meeting.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Mackey, and Mr. Holland for the second. Mr. Krabman, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
I'll vote in the affirmative as well, so that's five to zero, so good luck with that.
Great, thank you.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to number nine on our schedule, our agenda, rather, it's discussion of scheduling a retail marijuana hearing. Mr. Montori, please don't tell me it pertains to 1625.
No, it doesn't, it's, it's for Sundays, who had filed an application with the board in early October. It's at 2504 Main Street, it's actually Caniford's Inc., DBA Sundays, and they had reached out to us asking when there'd be an available time or an agenda to have a hearing. Unfortunately, obviously, October's busy with town meeting, we had MBTA communities and a slew of other reasons during the fall that we couldn't schedule a meeting, but I wanted to get something on the agenda so we can notify them, and they can start their public notice in the newspaper. So the earliest, based on when notices need to be in the newspaper, would be January 23rd, which is the end of the last meeting in January. If the board was comfortable with that, we could schedule it on that night, and then the next meeting after that is February 13th. But, you know, I'd leave that to the board, but I'd like to at least get them scheduled so they know.
Are you aware of any other significant agenda items on the 23rd?
No, the only thing that would happen around that timeframe would be the budget presentation. And as we, you know, I, I hope to present, on the 23rd would be the latest, I present, I may even be ready sooner, and I may ask the board to do it on an off night, since it really does take up a whole meeting, so we can decide as we get closer, but other than that, January shouldn't be too out of our month.
All right. All right, so are my colleagues comfortable with posting that for a public hearing on the 23rd of January?
I'm good.
All right, okay, so why don't we proceed with that, you'll notify the applicant? What's, do you remember off the top of your head what the notification timeline is? Is it 14 days or 20 days?
Yeah, they got it into the, to the, into the newspaper and then notify butters, so I think we're, it's either seven or 14 days, but the newspaper deadlines are the ones that are the difficulty meter.
Okay.
So do that, and then we'll notify, if the board approves the 23rd, we'll notify the applicant tomorrow, if for some reason the 23rd doesn't work, we'll push them to the 13th.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'll move forward with that in late January. Very good.
Is there a vote on it?
Yeah, let me ask if we have a motion to schedule that public hearing.
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Wellman, and Mr. Holland for the second. Mr. Krabman, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative, so that's five to zero.
We'll reach out to them tomorrow, thank you very much.
All right, excellent. Okay, now if I follow through on my checkmarks here, I think we have one last item on this agenda, and that has to do with the acceptance of a donation to the Veterans Department. You should have correspondence in the form of an email dated December 12 from Lisa Downey, our Veterans Agent, to the Town Managers Office, indicating that a donation was made to the Veterans Office, specifically 32 $100 Market Basket gift cards that will be given to the recipients on the Chapter 115 program, and an additional 31 $50 Market Basket gift cards that will be used for the Chapter 115 homeless veterans. So it does not speak specifically to who made the donation, perhaps it was anonymous.
VFW, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I apologize, I misread that, so that came generously from the VFW.
From the VFW, yeah.
Yep, so let me apologize to them and gratefully thank them for that generous donation to support veterans with that significant donation. We have to acknowledge this so that my Veterans Agent can go about the distribution of those gift certificates or gift cards. So may I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, so Mr. Holland offers the motion, and Mr. Krabman seconds. Mr. Krabman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson votes aye, so that will make that unanimous, and again, thank you to the VFW for their generous support of our veterans here in town. All right, I think we got through the business items. Mr. Montori, did you have anything else under the Town Managers' report?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so that brings us to board member reports. Mr. Krabman, do you have anything?
I have a little question.
Thank you, Mr. Holland?
Yes, just a couple things, I want to thank Rabbi Bornstein and the Tewksbury Fire Department, Police Department, and all those who came out to celebrate the lighting of the menorah the other day.
Okay.
And also, have a merry and safe New Year. Merry Christmas and safe New Year. Both of them be safe, put it that way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mackey, how about you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give an additional shout out to our Veterans Agent Lisa Downey and her staff. I know they've been working for the past few weeks gathering donations like the one we just accepted from the VFW, and they're putting together stockings and other gifts and support for our low-income or homeless veterans, and those will be getting delivered this week, I believe. So wanted to give them a shout out, and then echo the sentiment that I feel will be echoed more than once tonight, of happy and safe holidays to everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee met last week, will meet again in January, and we were planning, different events that we're planning for the year, but one thing I really wanted to bring to the public's attention and to the board's attention tonight is that Officer O'Keefe is doing a blanket and sweatshirt drive, new blankets and new sweatshirt drive to benefit a domestic violence organization she works with, and she notes also that it helps our homeless population in the community. There is no shelter space at all, and so we do have individuals that are living in our community in their vehicles and outdoors this winter, which I know our police department has worked very hard in the past with local agencies to, to find shelter for folks during the coldest part of the year, and that is not possible. And so at this time of year, we know that folks are looking to make donations or get involved to help folks in our community, and those donations for new blankets and new sweatshirts can be taken at the police department, there's a, there's a bin in there that is cleared out regularly, so thank you very much.
Thank you, very appropriate this time of year. All right, I just have a statement I want to read for those paying attention, and specifically, I want to note that as we close out the calendar year and enter into our annual town election season, I want to take a moment to encourage reasonable and committed residents to consider running for various local positions here in town. Our community is richer for the service of many, and we all share, in my opinion, a responsibility to give back in some way to the place we call our hometown. I've personally been honored to serve on our community, serve our community since 2003, when I first saw elective office on the school committee. I lost that effort, but immediately joined the finance committee for four years during very tumultuous financial times, and I'll soon be completing 15 years sitting at this table as a select board member. Along the way, I've been honored by the confidence shown by fellow residents in nearly 12,000 votes cast next to my name. Our community has changed a lot in those 20 years of service, and we've addressed many important issues, including financial issues, delivery of services, and capital improvement projects. We've renovated the Wind Middle School, built a new high school, a new Center Elementary School, a South Fire Station, a Centa Fire Station, a new DPW facility on the horizon, Town Hall, and a senior center. We've updated our zoning bylaw, we have raised the town's financial footing by establishing real fiscal policies that resulted in a true and substantial stabilization fund and dramatically improved our bond rating. There's a lot to be proud of. Along the way, I have met residents I otherwise would not have ever interacted with. I've learned so much about our community and its people. My fondest memories include meeting with the many veterans who have served our country and honoring them at various events. Let me say that elective office is not easy, it takes commitment and courage of conviction. You get criticized more than you get praised. You learn, or need to learn, to work in a collaborative manner among equal peers, and then earn the support of your community at each town meeting and election. It is challenging, but it's well worth it. Over the last few months, I've given lots of thoughts to changes in my life, and I've reflected on the past 20 years. I've come to recognize that it's time for me to step away from this role and pursue other interests and adventures. When I was first elected, my two children were in grade school, and I cherish a photo I have of them counting election precinct results on election night as they learned about civics in real time. Now they both are married, and I'm a grandfather. I have other interests and priorities that call for attention. As such, I will not be seeking reelection this coming April, and I want the community to have advanced notice so that hopefully, multiple, reasonable, and service-focused residents can consider joining the fray. I'd be remiss if I did not take a moment to thank my wife, Andre, who has sacrificed more than I appreciate for my service over 20 years. I want to thank my entire family for their support through thick and thin. I want to thank my many friends who stepped up to hold signs and rally the troops. I want to thank the many colleagues I have sat at this table with, only they know what it takes to do this work. They include John Mackey, Jerry Selison, Anne Marie Stronach, David Gay, Ed Dick, Doug Sears, Scott Wilson, Jim Wentworth, Bruce Panelitis, Mark Krabman, Jay Kelly, Brian Dick, James Mackey, Jane Wellman, and Patrick Holland. In retrospect, the hottest decision I made at this table was deciding to make a change in our town manager, but the best decision I made was to make a change in our town manager. We're blessed to have hired Mr. Montori as town manager so many years ago, I believe 11. His professionalism, high ethical standards, and commitment to excellence were reasons to forge on when I was tired or distracted. As a multi-year chairperson, I interacted with him regularly, and I see firsthand the tremendous work and leadership he brings in his role each day. I also want to thank the many department heads of the town and the town employees, both past and present, who gave their best every day to serve our community. They earned my respect and appreciation. I'm proud of the road I have traveled, I know part of me will miss being engaged at this level, but I also know that it's time for the next generation of leaders to step up. So I wish my current colleagues and those that follow me at this table come April all the best as they strive to continue to move Tewksbury forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, second, Ms. Wellman, Mr. Krabman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Holland?
Aye.
I'll vote in the affirmative, we are adjourned, everyone have a great holiday stretch, and we'll see you in January.